Roll call vote please.
Susan Edmondson.
Present.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
And Ashley Jones is absent.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. This is approved. Informational items, strategic plan. A vote, okay. Spoke to approve the agenda. Favor, raise hands. Any opposed? Okay, agenda approved. Strategic plan update, Al.
Okay, well, I'll kind of kick off and then
Okay.
and then I'll let him speak, okay. So, as you recall, the board approved our revised strategic plan back in December, and at the time, we immediately went into the Proposition RP work and part held off on some implementation because we wanted to see if that was going to be approved or not because it might change our approach a little bit, and thankfully, it was approved. So, once the school year concluded, we got a little more in-depth in our planning from a staff side in terms of implementing the first year of the strategic plan or our first year work, identifying what that first year work should be. So, when we got the entire administrative team together across the district after school was out, we broke up into groups and started looking at what are the most important things we need to do the first year in order to get things moving, in order to make progress towards some of the larger strategies and goals of the plan, if you will. And so, from that work, then, the cabinet team continued to review and revise over the summer, so there's a supporting document in the board docs, it's about 10 or 12 pages long, that kind of gives you the nitty-gritty of what we've looked at so far, and then we've tried to summarize that into a PowerPoint presentation for tonight, just to kind of guide our talking points. So, what I've asked our team to do is to kind of share with you at more of a higher level what we've been working on so far, with the idea that you may have questions, you may have feedback, you may say, well, are we working on this, or should we be working on that, and then we can take that as feedback for our work. So, it's important work, it's not always the most exciting thing we do, but it's very critical that we deliver on what our community said they wanted as we develop that strategic plan. So, with that, we're going to start with the success rate students as our first focus area, and you may recall, we have five different strategies there that were identified through that process. Real-world learning opportunities, STEAM opportunities for students, soft skill development that our employing community really wants us to focus on, mental health supports, and then reducing gaps in achievement. So, those are the high-level strategies. There's an intermix, obviously, when you start looking at some of these, they play together in many different ways, and I think you'll see that as we start working through that. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Volker, and his team is here for support in this first focus area.
Well, good evening. As Dr. Montes said, I think it's really important to note that these all work together. I mean, trying to do these initiatives in isolation is often a mistake. You're trying to incorporate soft skills as you build tech, as you do real-world, hands-on, all these things should combine and do in actual practice in our classrooms. So, you'll see some overlap, you'll see things like that, and that is actually a really good thing, that you see that. So, looking at the first, looking at the real-world learning and soft skills development, we really combine that because our professional development committee, which is our teacher-driven committee, has taken that on. So, as a reminder, they set that goal, that by October 2020, the number of teachers and administrators receiving formal, multi-session training and project-based learning will expand from 5% to 25%. So, in two years, essentially, what they're doing is planning that progression. Now, I have to be honest, we've just started that, we had our first PDC meeting, I believe it was last week, so we have much work to do in this area, but that is our goal. What we've done so far, we've expanded our Project Lead the Way teachers and training into the elementary and further into the high school, and that really is a project-based learning and a soft skill effort, because you're working on inquiry and engineering design as you're doing those project-based learning. So, we had eight teachers, digital learning teachers and a curriculum specialist attended the elementary launch training this summer.
Launch is a Project Lead the Way elementary program.
Yeah, it's the elementary name for the things that we talk about at the middle school and the high school, and Project Lead the Way. And then, we had eight fifth-grade science teachers did the initial launch training, and they are implementing a module this year, which is exciting. So, they are doing that right now, we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a little bit, working on those inquiry and engineering design. I think it's important for everybody to realize, it's not just in that module where our kids are going to benefit. It's the specific professional development that helps our teachers with project-based and inquiry-based learning that they can use throughout the year as they implement other science standards. So, that's what we're excited about. They work on the four Cs, the 21st century education, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity, as they're incorporating all this. And I think you're going to see, as we continue with our professional development plans over the years, that that committee is really seeking opportunities to increase training on an ongoing basis. You might hear or see some possible Buck Institute, you might hear that phrase or that. They are, they do a lot of professional development on project-based learning. So, you see that in the future, you'll know what that relates to. The next one, on STEAM opportunities, it really is our Project Lead the Way expansion, and I'll give you a little more detail on that. So, we had an innovation subcommittee, because they're aware of our innovation committee, they came up with the initial idea to explore Project Lead the Way expansion into the elementary levels, and we've talked to you about this before, looking at Shawnee Mission Schools, Blue Springs Schools, Lee Summit. So, in year one this year, we implement the one module in fifth grade, the DLTs and curriculum specialists attended that training, they are implementing the infection detection module for fifth grade. It's pretty interesting, I mean, essentially, someone in the school started with some type of virus, some type of something, and the students have to explore how it originated, how it spread, but it's really pretty neat. So, we're excited about, we're just starting there, we're excited about that growth. In year two, looking next year, we're going to implement two additional models in the fifth grade and one to two modules, excuse me, in kindergarten and first grade. And a module is like that, the infection detection unit. So, we're going to do that kindergarten and first grade. Here's a reason for that, we are doing our math training for our third, fourth, fifth grade next year, second, third, fourth, and fifth, so we thought, while they were doing math, we'll do K1 for the project-based learning and the STEM are the launch instruction, and then we'll continue to grow it throughout the elementaries. So, secondary, it's exciting, our expansion, we're looking at possibly engineering design and development, it's called EDD, it's another leg of the engineering path, biomedical innovations or medical interventions, so it's that third leg of the biomedical path, and then, we're really looking at cybersecurity as our next leg of the computer science course. So, that's what we're looking at for expansion into the high school, and their programs are pretty developed, we're just looking at capstones and things like that.
What will determine our direction, then?
Student interest is always a really good way to go back. I mean, we always look at other things, we want to look at marketability for kids, we want to look at college programs, we want to look what will get them a leg up as they go out into the real world, and whether it's post-secondary or some of these things, you're looking at possibly just going into the workforce. So, what is going to be the most advantageous for our kids? That's what we're looking at. So, I know I'm going quick, but you asked me questions, and a lot of these, I will say, will have multiple work sessions throughout the year, and this is probably just scratching the surface on the information that you'll get as we go on, definitely on mental health as well, and we talk about that in October. So, looking at mental health supports, want to highlight our two new mental health professionals, Sarah Kaczynski and Jessica Jackson, they have been an incredible addition to our district, so it's been, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. They are liaisoning with outside agencies at a level that frankly is very high, they speak the same language, they are having conversations that they can come back and translate to us, and translate to our teachers, and then we can put plans into place with a much higher level of detail than we've had before. So, that's been great, they're partnering with our school counselors on a consistent basis, and I'll just say this, I got an email from the school counselor, was not solicited the other day, one I really respect, that said, I just want to thank, and thanked myself and Dr. Hoffman, but really, I'm just going to turn that around and give that back to you guys and our leadership for allowing these people to be on staff with them. The support that they're giving our school counselors is pretty incredible. One of the things they're also doing, they're doing tier-two groups, that's our second tier of intervention, you might think about grief or divorce, but they're helping make those groups deeper, more meaningful, more powerful. Our counselors work really hard at that, but the support you can give them to help make those more powerful for kids.
How do our students get connected to those groups?
That's a great question. We are working on kind of what is our specific model, because it had varied from building to building, from counselor to counselor. So, we were building, we are building through our multi-tiered system of support, which I'll talk a little bit about, what are our specific measures, how are we getting there? And I think in October, I'm going to ask some specific questions of the board regarding that specific, and I need some feedback from you guys regarding different practices.
The safety committee, that was a comment that was made today at the high school, we went and talked with some of the SLT kids, they didn't know those things were there necessarily for supports for them. So, figuring out a way to communicate with our students that those measures are there, and they're going to increase and get better because of the staff we have now.
Absolutely.
So, I think finding a way to directly communicate with the students, not through their parents, not through teachers, because that was the thing we got from them today, they don't feel like they're communicated to.
And that doesn't surprise me that they don't quite know that yet, because I really think we are in that design, I mean, we have, we've been working a lot with the counselors, and Sarah and Jessica have been working a lot, we want to feel good about the process and that those groups are meaningful. And a tier-two group isn't designed that you're going to be in, for example, that group for all year long. Well, if you're in it all year long, we're not getting you the information you need, the skills you need, to be able to talk about that. So, we're working with our counselors to make sure that process is in place, and hopefully in October, I'll be able to give you more detail.
He's mentioned October a couple of times, it's our tentative agenda in October work session to have a deeper dive on the mental health task force work, so that's why he's mentioned that a couple of times. We're going to bring that back when we can spend more time on that topic.
So, mental health task force, the next thing I actually, I was going to talk about. We are working with that group, just in brief, because I hope to be able to speak at greater length about, on the missions and beliefs regarding social-emotional learning. What do we believe as a district? How should that be integrated into teaching and learning? Because it really is connecting and working with the whole child. We know, as they feel safe and as they feel comfortable academically, they're going to grow faster, and that's the key, and we have some kids that aren't there. So, how do we support them to get them there? So, they do grow academically, because in the end, it is about that academic success, that's what I'm looking for, but I know some kids will need different things to prepare them for that academics. So, we're working with that, we're working on a multi-tiered system of support for behavior, so where our staff and our students know which supports and know why students might move up our tiered level of supports. So, tier one is just what we provide all students in our district, tier two, students who continue to struggle, might need more specific supports in skill attainment, and then tier three, we're talking about our students that even with through specific supports and skill attainment, they are still struggling, often a very high level, so we're going to have much more detailed, specific approaches, lot more involvement with our mental health professionals and our behavior interventionists. We need to have our staff feel comfortable that there is a process, so we're working on that. And then, it's the counselor resource review year, just so you're aware, you're going to hopefully see some things even in the budgeting process, as we look at what our counselors believe they need to support our students, and then we're continuing with our trauma-sensitive schools training and lead team approach. So, the last one we have up there is reducing the achievement gaps. It really is about providing that framework. So, a multi-tiered system of support is a framework we use to ensure students receive solid core instruction, because that's where it starts with every single child, and then additional supports if they're struggling academically. So, at the elementary level, we are building that pyramid for both academic and social-emotional learning, and I cannot tonight give you all the details, but I thought it might be important to note that these plans are fairly specific, I can provide all of these, hopefully in an update, so you'll be able to see that, whether it's the intervention update or whether it's in the October work session, it's just a lot of information, because we want it to be pretty detailed, we really do. So, we're doing that at the elementary level. At the secondary level, that grid is currently a work in progress, it was built last year by the lead team after analyzing existing student data and what our students need, and we're refining interventions. Interventions like assigned intervention now at our Panther time at the high school. So, I think making that an assigned part is really going to be an important step, maybe assigned for more students than realize right now needed assigned. So, they might be a little bit surprised, but you know what, they need it, they really do. After-school tutoring with transportation starts next week at the sixth through 12th grade level, we have advisory grade checks, we're working at the high school level on our, and you're going to see some information coming from Mr. Miller pretty soon, on our high school students' progress report card, and it's not like a report card with grades on it, but it really is more, these are the nine things, or nine measures, that, let's say you have a freshman child, like I do, that if they're being successful at these nine things, and we'll report on that, then they are progressing adequately towards graduation and towards success. And that's going to be specifically listed for students and parents, these are the things they're progressing adequately on, and these are the things that we have concerns, and we need to continue to talk about how we can provide them greater supports, and that's going to be for every student in the high school, and it does change by grade level, I mean, because what a junior needs and what the 10 things a freshman need are very different. So, that's going to be rolled out, we'll be talking with parents about that. Learning lab classrooms for additional support, we have our Achieve 3000 literacy program that is now at the secondary level as well. So, that's just a highlight, and I know I spoke quickly, that's what we're working on right now this year, we know there are plenty of other things in the other document that we will continue to work on.
When you're talking about achievement gaps, and are kids ever held back anymore?
At the secondary level, it's really credit-driven, so you might, you repeat a class, now, at the elementary level, it's pretty rare, research is pretty clear, kindergarten, you can pull that off. I mean, I, if you, we have kids that repeat kindergarten, that might do that twice, maybe even the first grade. After that, research basically states it really is a path to dropping out. I mean, the social, the stigma involved, just the barriers to actually catch up, we'd rather build a safety net earlier and within their current structure, and then slowly catch them up, maybe it takes three years, but okay, I mean, if they're fully caught up to their peers after three years, I'm okay with that. But, yeah, retention is, unless you catch them very young, not very successful.
Any other questions under the success-ready students? I know I give Al a hard time, but that was very succinct.
Okay, I tried my best, there's a lot of information I'd like to know.
All right, good summary of that. All right, we'll move on then to the second focus area, which is high-quality staff, and this area, Dr. Hatfield and Dr. Pettingill are working together on some of these strategies. Obviously, the market-ready competitive salary and benefit plan was a very high priority that came through our planning process, ensuring appropriate class sizes and case loads is kind of a benchmarking issue for us. Workplace satisfaction is always important, and then, job-related training and advanced degrees. So, those are the major strategy areas, and again, there's a couple of pages worth of detail, but we've kind of boiled it down to some talking points on this slide, and so, folks, if you'll take off with it.
Well, as Dr. Montes said, Dr. Hatfield and I are working closely together on this process, actually, she's been buried in this process for over half a decade, looking, I mean, she very closely works with all of our neighboring districts, very aware and keeps herself aware of all of the other districts. I don't know if anybody would argue, but high-quality staff's kind of a big deal. Not only are they hard to get, they're hard to keep. As it came out in Prop RP, when we were discussing things, our neighbors to the north, especially, were paying more than we were, it was hard to be competitive, and it was hard to keep our really good staff when they could go to a neighboring district and make significantly more money. So, Prop RP allowed us to become much more competitive, and working with Team Ray Peck last year, it came through to just give a flat raise to all the teachers, and that gave a chance to help us catch up, because we were behind in all the areas. We then took that same percentage, you know, the board, obviously, the board approved all of this, and spread that across all of our salary schedules. But, one thing we didn't do was really get into per position studies. So, now, what we're doing is we take those same 20 schools, actually, teachers are the easiest, because they have nice, clean salary schedules across the board, and everybody calls a teacher a teacher, and allows us to do some gap analysis, we can figure out what the medians are from each step, we then figure out what percentages were ahead or behind the median of those 20 schools, and it allows us, now, we can go back to Team Ray Peck with that data and those pieces of information, so that we can do a better understanding with them and help them understand where we're low, where we're doing better. We're doing that with teachers, we're doing that with nurses, I mean, every group that we have, to see where we, how are we competing with the market? It's harder in maintenance, and, you know, not everybody calls different maintenance positions the same, technology, you know, we have a Tech 1, a Tech 2, and a Tech 3, well, how that compares to the 20 other schools is different. We're using the 20 schools that we used in Prop RP for the teaching and the certified side. I'm not necessarily competing with Park Hill for my custodians, I am competing with Harrisonville and Pleasant Hill and some of our neighboring districts that weren't necessarily part of that 20, so we're expanding it for our classified positions. So, the same time, we're taking that same approach of research and using with our case loads, with our class sizes, because to keep teachers happy and to keep our really good teachers here, it's not just the money. They also want to make sure they have a great environment, and that includes workload. You know, if you have a second-grade teacher with a high class size, that could cause them to look otherwise, so. I'll turn it over to Lisa a little bit, I kind of ran with it there and gave you a high level to add to that.
Can I insert a quick comment, because you kind of led into it there. I think a comment that I've heard from several different teachers is they appreciated the raise, but they would almost prefer more bodies than pay increase sometimes.
That's how that made this list.
Okay.
Was we're looking at that right alongside the salary pieces, we have a whole different spreadsheet, if you will, looking at the median class sizes for different levels, and then we'll look at the gap analysis for that as well, to see how we're comparing.
Did you want to go ahead and speak to the next one on the collaboration time, or do you want me to take that one?
You could.
Okay. So, the third item on our list is to work on workplace satisfaction for our teachers and staff, and we've been working on that a long time, and I think we've made some good progress. One of the things we want to focus on this year is trying to find ways to provide more collaboration time for specifically our elementary teachers. We know that we have the late start at the high school level, and we have some opportunities at the middle school level, but we don't have them at the elementary yet. So, we began that process last spring, looking, you know, kind of throwing everything against the wall, just to see if we could figure it out, but it's going to be a much more structured and strategic process now to try to make that happen. We think that will significantly help at our elementary level with that feeling of value among the staff, and we'll continue our other efforts as well, but that's going to be the main focus from that strategy. The fourth strategy speaks to ongoing support and training in your positions. I know you're all aware that we have a PDC committee that works very hard to develop and present and provide professional development for our certified staff, but there's not a focus on our support staff. So, this year, we're going to begin to see what does that look like and what does that mean. It is a little bit more difficult, because it's quite a variety of what all of our support staff do. So, the first step will be to look and see what do we think we need, what do the employees feel like they need, what do our supervisors feel like their employees need, and then, what can we provide in-house, as well as perhaps sending some of our staff outside for some trainings? The key, I think, to professional development and training of any sort is that it's differentiated based upon need. I would say that is what our PDC has done extremely well over just even the last two to three years, has really focused in on what, if teacher A doesn't need it, and teacher B does, teacher B will get it, and teacher A doesn't have to sit there and be bored. They do something they need. So, we want to look at that for our support staff as well. The first thing, we've actually already started this, is trying to systemize and really hone in on some of our onboarding processes to, when we bring an employee in, that we're providing them supports and information they need to be successful from day one in their job. We've already had conversations about some other things that we can do, but that initial training and onboarding is going to be the main focus this year, and then we'll also begin to survey and analyze what we think we need moving forward in terms of professional development. Look to other districts, even look to other businesses and organizations outside of education to see what they do for support and professional development for their staff.
Any questions on any of those topics? Again, there's a lot more detail in the supporting document, but this is kind of just a high-level view of what everybody's working on.
I had a quick question, on as far as collaboration and staff working together, when we are talking about that, we're usually talking about specific blocks of time that are set aside for that. Are there formats or venues set aside for communicating that don't involve a specific hour where people have to get together, whether that's email groups or things like that? Are we utilizing electronic means to facilitate collaboration and not just you have to have an hour together?
Oh, absolutely, and there's even, in addition to that, so there's still, we spend some time together, but we do it virtually.
Which is valuable.
Yeah, they're doing some remote collaboration, so that helps, you know, preserve some time, but they all, they do, they share Google classrooms and Team Drives and things like that. They're absolutely trying to maximize the time they have together.
That's continuing to grow, it really is.
Well, I know we've appreciated how much work you've put into getting the training for our substitutes, we were able to tell the students today, because one of the questions was, was our subs trained with safety and security measures? And so, they appreciated being able to hear that, yes, you put the subs through a training, that's probably one of our weaker points, but they still do get some training, because they asked that question today.
How are we doing on class size? I know last year, Peculiar had some issues and thought that, you know, there were too many, are we doing well with that?
We are, you want to?
Oh, go ahead.
Across the board, we are doing very well with class sizes, there are pockets of class sizes that I'm sure are a tad higher than the teachers would like to see them.
What is the average, and what is like the state average?
I would have to look to see what the state average is, and I don't even know that that, yeah, it definitely varies by grade. Ironically, I got a request from a very near neighbor to the west today, asking about class sizes, because they're having some larger class sizes in their district as well, even to the point where they're sending some kids from one school to another school, because they're trying to equalize some things. So, it's not a unique conversation to us, we have nothing, no classes that are outside of the range of what DESI recommends, and then, we also have our own internal numbers that we look at, and I haven't polled them since Labor Day, so I don't know if we have had many move-ins since then, but we were very, we were in good shape.
Ballpark figure, 25, 26?
At the elementary level, it's probably 21 is close to the average at the elementary level, and then it goes up from there, middle school and high school tend to be larger, obviously.
And your upper grades at the elementary schools tend to be larger, so your fourth and fifth grade is, we're going to, those are larger classes than kindergarten first and second.
Where we run into challenges, at any given school, you can have a class that's right on the bubble, and by that, you've got 51 kindergarteners, or no, 51 third graders, say, or fourth graders, is that two sections of 25, 26, or is that three sections of 17? Well, 17 is well below what we think is, I mean, it's well below the norm for that age group, but 25 is, it's within the DESI guidelines, and it's even within our guidelines potentially, but it still feels high, because the next grade level may only have 21 on average. So, it's almost always relative to what other grade levels are, but those classes ebb and flow from year to year, and at some point, they do get big enough that we go ahead and add the section. And that's part of the process every year, as we look at staffing, is to see if that grade level has been growing, and whether or not we think that's the year to add the section at that particular building. And it's getting more complex, because we've gotten more and more families moving into the district now than we've had for several years, so we're trying to estimate where the growth is at the same time.
One thing we do, Paul, is if we do have a class that grows exponentially during the school year, there's always that debate, do you hire another teacher and divide those kids and separate them from that classroom family that they've gotten used to for several months, or do you provide some additional support? And what we have traditionally done is we hire a teacher associate that's dedicated to that grade level to help provide reading and math instruction specifically, as well as help with other things. But that, I mean, it's, neither situation is ideal, so it's really about balancing, and even sometimes about what one cohort of students needs versus another cohort of students. So, it, I'm certain there are some teachers that wish they had smaller classes this year, and I'm sure there are some that are doing backflips, because it's better than it was last year, so.
When we have, like, student teachers that are coming in, do we take that into consideration about where we place them?
I do, sometimes. My first focus when placing student teachers is to place them with classroom teachers that are going to be great examples and teachers for them. that are going to be great examples and teachers for them, with the knowing that they'll use them well in the classroom. It's one of the factors I look at. I wouldn't say it's the main factor I look at.
And then you referenced caseloads. Is that talking about special education caseloads?
Yes.
What is the average size for elementary and secondary right now?
Probably about 12. At the elementary level, it's about 12, and then it ranges between 12 and 15 as you move up through the grade levels.
Any other questions we could help address? One thing I'll point out, we, you know, we used those 20 districts in the spring for our comparison group, and we're going to continue to use them, as Dr. Pettingill said, at least for like our teacher comparison groups. But we'll, we will adjust that group if we think we need to based on what the comparison needs to be. So, if we think it's more relative to look at more immediate districts, we'll do that. Strategic Plan Committee will talk about too what our statewide comparison group might want to be for some of the other things that we're looking at. So, we'll continue to revisit that as well. Then the final area is kind of a combo of a variety of things that are rolled under the heading of financial responsibility, maintaining fund balances, identifying community partners for support, facility maintenance, ongoing facility maintenance, and then that benchmarking that we've, we do in a lot of different areas, but we'll certainly be doing as we move forward in this area. So, it'll be kind of a team approach here. Cindy, if you want to talk about our balances first, go ahead.
Sure. So, our actual ending fund balance percentage for fiscal year 18 was 17.39%, which was higher than we had budgeted. We ended the year well. When we lay our fiscal year 19 budget on top of that, then we will end fiscal year 19 a little bit higher than was budgeted at 18.17% is where that stands right now.
So, again, that budget is an estimate still at this point in time, and, you know, usually we hope to do a little better than what we budget, but it is within the range that we'd set. 18 to 22% was our target range, and we do expect to be there at the end of the year. And for the most part, what little information budget-wise we have so far this year, we're doing, we're doing better than expected. So, the enrollment going up even more than we anticipated will be an aid. Assess valuation went up more than we anticipated, so that'll be an aid. So, we've got a lot of things that are working positive. We did have to add a few positions, though. We have to keep that in mind, and we'll do a budget adjustment in the near future to try to account for some of that stuff. The next bullet there is community partners. Michelle Stidham is working with me on an inventory of our current partners. We've got a lot of great partnerships that exist now. We want to continue to foster those, but where we're really focusing this year is trying to identify some new partners. And those are, what I'm most interested right now is trying to find more of the career-focused partnerships, where businesses and industries that are out there that are wanting our students as future employees, or looking at them as potential career path opportunities, trying to identify some of those that we can partner up with. So, Crystal and I, or Dr. Barr and I, are trying to formulate a list of those contacts. We've had conversations with some other individuals about trying to expand that reach. So, everybody's got a network of folks that they know that might be potential partners for us and in the business and industry world. So, to the extent you have access to some of the larger employers that are beyond retail, if you will, that might be more of the professional, professional nature and/or advanced manufacturing or industry-type opportunities. I know Susan Edmondson has already shared her company's contact information. I've got another email today from another employee who had heard this conversation and said, here's my, here's my good contact that would be great to talk to. We don't have many of those type of employers right here in our district, so we're having to expand that reach beyond our district, more of a metropolitan or at least south metro look on that, if you will.
Do we do anything with Honeywell?
That is definitely a company that we want to have more contact with. Right now, we have some students that are through the Missouri Innovation Campus and Summit Tech, have some interaction with Honeywell, but as a restricted access federal contract site, it's kind of hard to really, you can't just go place students there and do things very easily. But I would like to have more of a discussion there because there might be a certificate program we could offer here that would set them up for potential employment with them in the future. I just need to know what those programs are, so.
Yeah, I have heard that they have some active recruitment of high school going on. I'm not sure that's accurate.
Yeah. Those are the kind of things we're focusing on this year, trying to build some of those kind of partnerships. Next up is facility maintenance. Dr. Pettingill, if you want to talk about that process?
Well, as you're aware, we constantly, ongoing year-round, really dive in to researching our facilities. Where are we at with rooftop units? Where are we at with parking lots? Where are we at with building envelopes, controlled access, cameras? I mean, you have to weigh safety and security against keeping our kids in heat. So, there's a lot of variables that we have to take into consideration there, and so we have lists going on. I mean, I've got spreadsheets to keep track of, spreadsheets, but, you know, it's a tough balance to figure out what's more important, you know? This playground versus this parking lot versus these rooftop units, and we have to go back because there's only a finite fund there. Even though I tease Cindy a lot on her magic money drawer, it is hard to take care of everything that we want to take care of. So, one of the focuses of Prop RP that made me very happy was the fact that we are able to, and the strategic plan, is to make that a point of emphasis to keep our facilities up to date. Our kids deserve a safe, positive environment, and facilities plays a huge role in that. So, you'll see throughout the year, several components of us coming back with different options to see what we're going to focus on in our next five years.
And just for our newer board members, usually about January, in a work session, we bring you a preliminary list of, here are the projects we're anticipating working on for the summer, so that you can give us feedback on that before we go out to bid. And then we go through the bidding process typically in the spring so that we can get most of that work done in the summertime when there's fewer kids on campus than there are during the school year.
And I will just say to the board, I was able to go with Dr. Monses and Dr. Volker to the walkthroughs at Creekmore and Timber Creek on Wednesday this week. The kids love the new playground at Timber Creek, and once we get the rest of that sodded in grass, it's going to be really nice. They really enjoy the new play area.
And we are trying to share, as we work on those projects, obviously, the list got longer in terms of projects after April 3, and we got Prop RP approved. And so, we are trying to share as we work on those, and Michelle communicates about the new playground or anything else that, thanks to our public for supporting Prop RP because it helps us do more of these kind of projects. Then the last topic under that focus area is benchmark comparisons, and that's part of what the Strategic Plan Committee will be talking about next week when we meet, is revisiting, you know, who we want to compare ourselves to and what do we want to compare ourselves on in terms of some of the other things. And there are more general categories, but we might, we have looked at a variety of things, graduation rates and attendance rates and assessment comparisons, things of that sort. So, we're going to look at what that, what that group could look like. We'll use, again, maybe those 20 districts for some of these comparisons, but it might make more sense if we're going to include student achievement, that we get a more narrow focus of districts that are much more alike in terms of our student composition. So, we're going to have that part of that conversation. This, again, was one of the areas that I was a little surprised through our feedback process that it made it as a high priority, because I don't think, we often think in education that we need to continue to compare ourselves to others, but the reality is, that's what companies and businesses and the real world does all the time. And so, for me, it's beneficial because through those comparisons, you can identify districts who are doing things well and identify hopefully what some of their best practices are to improve what we do. So, that's where I see the big benefit of it. So, I'm glad we're going to continue to work on that. All right.
Another thing in that area, I don't know, over the past few years, I'd say probably three or four different times, I've had people come up to me and ask me about some comparison that they saw. And at first, I assumed it was ones that we looked at. Then I realized there are probably hundreds of, I don't know, 10 or 20 or 50 or 100 comparisons out there. I think it would be interesting to, as a district, track some of those so we know what our community is seeing. And so, when you just go Google, where does Raypek rank or school rankings, there's got to be a top five kind of websites out there that do that stuff. I think we should track that and at least be aware of what's being reported about us. Another thing on that is, it could be wrong, and we could need to correct it. I'm not sure.
Yeah. No, I, even if you go to Realtor.com and look at properties, it shows up there, absolutely.
Yes, that was one that I recently saw.
Sure. There's lots of those out there, and unfortunately, they're not very scientific typically, and so that makes it hard for us to assign value to them, but the general public's going to just because it exists. I mean, it's out there. So, yes, I think that is a good point. We need to be paying attention to those as well.
Maybe we have a page on our website that gives us top five in our comments about them.
Yeah. Any other questions or observations? Any, any areas where you think either we didn't talk about it tonight, or you didn't see it in the supporting document, that you think we're missing the focus in terms of year one? Knowing that this is a five-year plan, some of these things that we're talking about are foundational to more work that's going to come. Did you see anything that, or didn't hear anything? Was there something you didn't hear that you'd like to have heard more about that we could work on or emphasize more? We've been living this pretty closely and working on it for a while, so if something comes to mind that you'd like to get more information on or ask about what we're working on, we're glad to provide that. So, don't hesitate to ask us in the meantime.
There was one thing, I think this is great, by the way, you guys have done great work. Something that recently has, seems like it's been popping up on social media a lot is the concept, and this goes back to success-ready students. Are, this is the question, are we preparing students for the real world? Can they fill out a tax return? Do they know how to balance their checkbook? I think we're doing a lot of that, perhaps, I don't know, sometime, maybe at our next meeting or in an update. Could you provide us a list of how we're doing that? So, when people ask us, why don't we prepare kids for the real world? It'd be nice to have a list of what all of our students graduate having been taught in terms of those real-world skills.
Well, I know personal finance goes over some of that stuff at the high school that they have to have.
So, if we could just be armed with some facts?
Sure.
That we could let people know what we're doing? Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or feedback? If not, I think next on the agenda was the board self-evaluation. I'll just kind of share from my perspective a little bit of context here, and then this is really the board's discussion to have in terms of what you want to do or focus on. But I would tell you that as a board, I'm glad that you're doing a self-evaluation process each year. It's important, and not all districts do that, so I think you should be commended for that. And so, the tool itself came from Missouri School Boards Association. In fact, I think three or four years ago, when we took this version for the first time, we were one of their pilot districts, or one of the first districts to use that as a board to review. And so, my thought for you as a board would be, as you look through this feedback, and generally, there's a lot of consensus there in terms of board members' thoughts about where we're at on individual items, with a caveat that we do have two brand-new board members. And so, I think there were times where we didn't rate ourselves as highly just because we didn't have everybody with the same level of experience, and that time will take care of that, and I'm sure there's no real concern of any type there. The one that stood out to me is that it looked, that we didn't rate ourselves highly at new board member orientation. We didn't have a formal process, per se, and Kim Bailey and I had had conversations about that and maybe some things we could do moving forward, but that might be an area that, as administrative team and Pam and I can work with you as the board to try to put something together that's more formal moving forward. So, that might be an example of one based on just me looking at the results. But to the extent we, as a leadership team, can help you as a board in your role, we're glad to do that. So, if you see any trends in there or want to talk about any trends in there that you saw or observations, we're glad to support you in any way, so.
Well, I know one question I had, it was on question three, and I rated it proficient instead of advanced, because I don't know every building's mission and vision, and do they align with the district one? Is there a way we could get a list of each building's mission and vision?
We could, but the majority of the buildings have adopted the district.
Have adopted the district's mission and vision, so it might just be very repetitive.
Okay. Well, it'd be curious to know that because I don't.
Are we, do we have any buildings that have a different mission or vision that you could think of right now?
I believe, yeah, I'd have to go back and check. I'll review it, but I think I wouldn't want to present you the district's mission and vision 13 times. So, I think it's, we have worked hard on aligning a lot of those things, and then going from there, we all have different collective commitments sometimes, things like that. Good question, and I'll go ahead and check for you, Ruth.
As new board members, did you guys have anything that really stuck up to you?
No, I didn't.
I think we, as a board, have worked on a lot of this stuff for the last several years, and so it's really helped bring up some of those ratings.
I'd just like to thank the administration. Their information that you provide us and the communication we have with you, you know, helps us a lot. I think based on this evaluation, we ought to double our salaries. So, I think we've done pretty good.
It's fair. Two times zero is still a pretty good salary.
Twice as much.
Well, I think where I, my perspective is, if I go back and look from the first year as a board, you worked on this to where it is now, it's, there's much more consensus in terms of, you know, where, not only where you rate yourself, but it shows how much the board has been working together. So, we appreciate that. Makes our job much more straightforward.
I think something that we've focused on the last couple of years was when we're, we have stuff on the agenda of relating it back to board policies that it relates to, so that we're focusing on the policy aspect of it and showing that we are following policy.
I was just skimming through them, looking for ones that didn't have a blue bar.
Yeah.
Budgeting and financial accountability on page 12 had some, you know, some different areas. So, I'm wondering, is that like a, getting more information to the board or understanding more about the process or understanding more about the numbers? Not sure how we could improve.
I think I probably went with most on that one, just because we do have newer ones than we've had in a while.
You know, one of the things that might relate to that is a lot of our financial reports are typically, except we're in the budget development phase, they're typically in consent agenda, and it's just part of the monthly approval process. And I'm a realist enough to know that there are some months you're able to spend a lot more time reviewing those than others, but we can, as a, as a team, identify more opportunities to bring more budget-related information. It's not, it's not always the funnest stuff to look at in a board meeting compared to some of the other things we look at, but I think, I know Cindy's always willing to try to share more information, and it kind of ties into that transparency area that we've always tried to focus on.
I think you guys have done a much better job, at least than from when we started, about in your presentations and stuff. You guys refer back to how it fits in the budget much more than it used to be. So, I think that we kind of get just used to that and forget that that wasn't always that way. And so, it's much better, you know, sharing that with us when you're doing program reviews and, you know, RFPs and all that stuff. It's much more clear than it used to be.
And you, Dr. Monses, you may make a good point. You know, we went from having all the financial data on the agenda every time to having it in the consent. Maybe it's something where we kind of find a happy medium, perhaps quarterly or three times a year or something. We put something specific on the agenda for a type of financial update that's not in consent. That might help with transparency and keeping us all with a specific time to ask a question.
Yeah, no, that's good. Any other things that come to mind that we can help the board with? Obviously, we have the MSBA conference coming up here at the end of the month, so as you kind of look through this, if there's something that resonates with you, there's probably a session at the conference that you can go sit in on and say, oh, there's what three other districts are doing, or some other district that was part of a presentation is doing in this area. Do we want to look at that? Now, the risk of that is that as we get done with that conference, you come to me with 12 different things you want us to try, and we might have to do a little prioritization process, but to the extent, you know, it helps build your capacity. And we might have to do a little prioritization process, but to the extent, you know, it helps build your capacity as a team, we're, we're willing to try that. So my advice would be, look for those sessions that, you know, kind of tie back to some of the things you might have seen here, if it, if it will help.
What you might find at some of the breakout sessions is, those people use Raypack as an example. And especially in new member training, there was a lot of stuff that was Raypack's information up there. Being a new member, you don't know everything that's going on in the district, and everybody turns and looks at you like, oh, this is, you know.
Tell us about that, Ruth.
Can you elaborate on this? I'm like, I have no clue. I just know that's our district up there that everybody's looking at.
That's what I'm saying, I'd be happy to put you in touch with our secretary.
Here's his number.
Did somebody have a way that they feel like we could do better? On page twenty-nine, it was question twenty-nine. It says, we were split fifty-fifty on the, most stakeholders share a common understanding of the district's strengths and challenges. Does anybody think of something that we, the reason why proficient versus advanced on that one, or something we're missing?
Did you say twenty-nine?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just curious.
And I, I think that may come from how often board members are approached by others, and I think that that may play into it as well, because if they, if, I would feel like if I had people constantly coming to me talking about things and like, speaking as if they didn't know much about what was going on in the district, I would feel that our stakeholders aren't as involved.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Well, and, and part of the reality is, everybody lives such busy lives that they won't necessarily engage with something unless they have a specific reason to engage with it. So even though we try to share as much as we can, there are times where it's not relevant until it's relevant. And so that leads to more questions. So it, that's going to be one that's always a never-ending process, if you will. Well, if you have any other feedback items you would like our assistance with, don't, don't hesitate. We've made a few notes here, and we're, we're glad to try to do a little more research and share out some more information on a couple of these as we move forward. And we can, again, revisit this, and it'll be good table conversation at the conference when we, when we're there here at the end of the month.
Is there anything that you see as an administration? You know, I mean, we kind of look at ourselves, but then.
I'll just, I'll share with you what I've shared with several folks. You know, I've worked with a lot of boards in different districts now throughout my career, and I would, I would rank you at the top of the list as, as a board as a whole, in terms of your interest in what you do as board members, and your support for us and the district as a whole, all the way down to the classroom level. So I, I think you should be commended for that, but I also appreciate the fact that you're willing to focus on continuous improvement. So that's, that, as long as you keep doing that, we're going to continue to move the district forward, so.
I do like that, coming in as a, as a new member, it's a fire hose of information that you've got to stand in front of and digest. And the, the team that, the way you guys present it and everything, it's very understandable. You get your points across, you have the information that we need. It's not hard to understand it. So that's very enlightening, and it's just, it's easy to digest, so.
We appreciate that.
Well, as a new board member, do you, can you think of something that we could do to make it better for a new board member when they're coming on?
I can't, I mean.
I was just curious.
Actually, have you, I mean, it's, it's been pretty easy to, to take on. I mean, even, I just knew that, like, the budget and everything, I mean, it's, it's a lot of stuff to go through. But coming in, you know, you know, it's crunch time, you've got to go through, you've got to look at the budget. I had a meeting with you and talked about budget. If I had any questions, I could ask you. You know, and then understanding how RFPs and all this stuff work, and, I mean, it's just, it was easy to grasp, so.
Yeah, it, the challenge is the timing of, of the election process and coming on in April, when we're making kind of the end decisions, if you will, for the next year. So there might be twenty agenda items in April and May that are action items, and now next week, we may only have one or two. So that's just kind of the nature, but.
I, I will say, any new members that, or new people that want to run, do your homework, come to meetings so you know how everything flows and, and what they're going to look at. Or go online, I went online and I watched probably the last two years of boring meetings.
Intriguing is what you meant.
Intriguing.
Yeah, but yeah. But, you know, you, you kind of got the, the grasp of what's going on and what you're getting into and what to expect, so. Do, do your homework and know what to expect.
Well, I hate to say this, but Michelle's report next week is going to confirm your notion. The average watch time of our meetings is probably less than five minutes, so, even though the meetings are much longer than that.
I may skim through them.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's also, I have had the opportunity to attend lots of board meetings in many districts, and so to see how our, how they are run and how well organized our, our board meetings are compared to some other districts that I've seen. I mean, I've seen board members fall asleep, I've seen arguments between them, and so just to see how well-run it is, I'm very appreciative of that, it's well-organized. I was talking about you.
Paul's set up all of a sudden, I don't know what that is.
All right, well, I appreciate all that, and, and again, I appreciate your, as a board, many boards don't even do this part of the process. They don't do the reflection that you guys do, and that's ongoing, obviously.
Moving on to committee updates.
Okay, so, you know, at our monthly meetings, we have a chance to give a brief report about committee activities, but I think it might be useful to take a few minutes tonight and kind of share out what committees have been working on so far. Some of these committees haven't met at all yet, some of them have already met a couple of times, and so everybody's at a little bit different stage, but we can kind of share from our perspective what's happened so far and, and let the committee members add in anything they want to. I will mention that, we've mentioned meetings that are going to be coming, and I will tell you that in October, we anticipate sharing with you some student achievement information in our work session, along with some updates that are more detailed from the Mental Health Task Force and the Safety and Security Task Force. So those topics, we're anticipating for the October work session. And then by November, we're talking about things that might be potential new programs or new initiatives for the next year, things that we highlighted in the strategic planning process, but we didn't get implemented for year one, and we want to start talking to you about some of those programming opportunities for year two, which would be next school year, and get ahead of that rather than waiting till March. If we want to decide to add a program in March or April, we're already behind the eight ball in terms of staffing. So that's kind of what we're thinking about in the next couple of months in terms of our work sessions. And some of the work of what's going to happen with the committees will lead into that. So we'll just go down by the list alphabetically here, and audit finances first, and Cindy and Susan, I think, are our two reps here on that, so.
So the Audit Committee meets, Audit and Finance Committee meets quarterly. We've had one meeting so far this year where we met with the auditors, and when they finished their fieldwork and got an informal preliminary report, which was good results, and they let us know that they will be reporting to the full board in October. We don't have any significant business like changing auditors or changing depositories or anything like that for the rest of the year. We'll be looking at internal audit work and investment reports, so. Anything to add to that, Susan?
I do, we do have a potential lease refunding that the committee might look at too at our next meeting, so.
That's right, forgot that.
Citizens Advisory hasn't.
We have not met yet, so we are in the process of recruiting members for that now. So Pam has sent an email to all the people that served last year and seeing who's interested in serving again. Our anticipated first meeting was October third, but then we found out that the high school has their academic award night that night, and that's, impacts probably easily a third of our committee members realistically. So we're going to try to come up with another date. But that committee in particular, really, that's one of our primary feedback loops that we use for some of those major topics that we're discussing, discussing. So when we were doing facility planning, that was the first group that we showed. Here are the options that we're considering, you know, what, what's your feedback? And we've used them for a variety of ways. My guess is we'll focus, continue to focus on things that are in our strategic plan and talk to them about, you know, here's, here's one piece of what we're doing for success-ready students or workforce, or workforce, and, and see what they think or feedback on that. But if you have topics on that, that you'd like us to share, you can either share them with us or get us that feedback however you'd like to. So we're still in the formation mode there. Next up is curriculum review, and Kim Bailey was our representative there. So one of the things we need to do is identify a new member, and we can wait till our, we replace her, or we could do that sooner than that if we need to.
Somebody that looks a lot like Kim Bailey.
Yeah. I noticed there was some commotion going on behind me, but we, we have.
Our first meeting of that, we don't have scheduled till October twenty-third, so we do have a little bit of time. Our two areas that we're reviewing this year are physical education and library-media curriculum. So those are our two areas, October twenty-third. We have a little time to mull over if you are interested in that committee.
All right, innovations next. Dr. Morris taking that on. We utilized our innovation committee as, as an outlet and a resource to focus on our STEAM initiatives, which close, obviously ties closely to our strategic plan. But I don't, I'm not sure, do we have our first meeting?
September twenty-fourth.
So, September twenty-fourth, it's going to be great. All right, Mental Health Task Force, I know, has been meeting.
Oh, yes, we have met three times. We have another one, I think, coming up in a couple of weeks. We're really looking at mission, vision, the beginnings, our tiered supports. We spend a lot of time on the role of our mental health professionals. How are we rolling them in to our current staff? So we are utilizing them to the fullest. And then just talking about our future work in social-emotional learning. What are we going to do? Our professional development, we've really focused across the district on self-regulation, class meetings, and organization and structures for kids. So those kids are organized and feel prepared. Or even their academic classes, that often brings down that level of anxiety, and so that's a big piece that we're working on.
You might mention what class meetings, describe that briefly so people have a sense of what we're talking about.
Class meetings, it, it looks a little bit different at different levels, but you can have class meetings from early childhood all the way up into the high school, where you're just bringing students in, making them feel a part of a class community. They know this teacher, and then it's a trusting, it's a safe class environment. They just talk about issues within their, their own class, so they feel comfortable sharing out, presenting. So we're working on soft skills, and we're working on kids making eye contact, and we're, we're on kids making presentations. Kids have to feel they're in a safe environment to practice those types of things. So as you build those, as you build a class community. You can do that through class meetings. Often, we're talking three to five minutes, maybe once a week, that you just talk about a topic that's pertinent to your class. So we're working with all teachers across the district on, on what that looks like, how to do that well. So, and then we're talking about good neighbor, strong community, as it comes up on November seventeenth. So we're taking last year's great work that we've done and just trying to improve on that, make that better. Really excited about some of the speakers, I'm not going to announce those now, but. I'm really excited about some of the people that we have that have already agreed to come in on November seventeenth, so I hope everybody in the community puts that on their calendar. We are really going to be in the kind of media blitz stage very soon. So if people haven't heard about it yet, that's okay, because they will soon. And that's what that group's been telling us.
Dr. Walker, you said there was a meeting coming up?
Yeah, we.
I don't have any more on my calendar.
No, and we haven't set an exact date. I, my calendar was not looking good either, so I'm trying to find.
I want to make sure I didn't miss it.
No, you did not, and you did not. It has not been set, so I'll get some dates out very soon.
And next on the list is policy review, and they have not met yet. We were awaiting the first round of policy revisions. We made the transition to MCE policy format July one, and we, you know, we'll continue to look for areas that we might need to adjust and clean up. But for this first meeting, we did finally get our updates from MCE for reflecting mostly the legislative changes that happened last legislative session. They were fairly active last spring in terms of laws that impact public education. So the first list of, of policy adjustments that we're going to bring to you have nearly every one of them deal with a legislative change. So we received them last week. The cabinet, the process is this, the cabinet will review them, and then if we see any cleanup work that we think needs to happen, we can go ahead and make those edits before we send them out to the committee. And so the committee has representatives, we have building administrators, teachers, a parent, other staff members. It's, it's a kind of a combo committee of various groups, if you will. And then that group can review them again and make any suggestions for edits before they come to the board. And just for our new board members, whenever we send them out to the committee to review, Pam also sends them to the rest of the board, just so they know what we're looking at at the committee level. So that if you have questions or concerns, or want to, want to know more about some of the policies that are coming our, down, down the path, if you will, you can share those with us as the committee's meeting, rather than just waiting for it to get to a board meeting. So that'll be October third, and we've got a schedule to meet monthly, but we probably won't need to. It'll be less often than that. But there have been times where we've needed to meet more often, so that's why we set up a monthly schedule for that.
So you said it is scheduled and it's on October third?
I don't know if we've sent calendar invites or not yet, so. That's a good reminder to make sure we're doing that.
I've been having trouble with my calendar, I missed the PDC one, so I'm double-checking all of them now.
We'll get it, we'll get a calendar invite out again if we haven't, so.
PDC was, I think it went to my Raypack one instead of my regular one.
And PD is next, Dr. Walker.
Well, PDC, we've met once, and it was a very, very busy meeting. We spent the majority of the time reviewing all the survey data from the pre-service days, professional development, and the early professional development. That probably took ninety percent of the time, because that's a lot of data. So teachers gave a lot of good feedback. It is an amazing challenge to try and provide professional development for four-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd teachers who work in, when you really think about it, could be hundreds of different kind of sub-con, content areas. So it is a challenge, but we're working on that. The PDC committee's a teacher-driven committee, and they're very, very involved and pretty vocal with the, with the things that they think. Ruth, anything with that?
One thing I wrote that I got out of it, because I was reminded this afternoon.
It did not exactly come across that way, Ruth.
Was, from a board perspective, you know, to encourage our staff, be truly honest on those surveys when you do our PD. You know, because it truly is looked at by the PD committee.
We spend hours looking at it, yes.
About why they rated it the way they did, those are truly read and play into how the PD is formed. So please, 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 do your surveys and be honest with them, so that those adjustments can be made.
Yeah, I still think sometimes there's this, well, they're not going to look at it, and we spend hours looking at it, and then trying to impact professional development based on the results. So we go back and say, no, we promise, we look at it.
Well, even the positive results make a change.
Yes.
Because it showed that what they had said before was followed through, and they did see the change.
Perhaps that's something that could be communicated. I mean, if we report out that the committee met and spent two hours reviewing them, then people will know we spent two hours.
We do, we actually have our professional development committee reps go back to their staff meetings and report exactly what we talked about, and that is part of their task as a professional development committee member. So our, our staff members hear that on a repeated basis. It's just, it's just difficult. I mean, when, if you're been giving feedback and you haven't seen your professional development change over the course of a couple of months, or even six months, you might lose heart at, you know, that, don't lose heart. We are continuing to try and make it individualized, that's just incredibly hard.
And those members on there are vocal for their, for who they stand for. They're very vocal, they have no shame in saying what they want.
They don't.
Hold on, is that electronic, is that something you could send to me electronically?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I can give you, the committee members have access, just pretty much to the, all the agendas and all the links, so we can set that up for you.
Thank you.
Safety and security update?
We had a meeting this morning.
Microphone again.
Student leadership team. I had a meeting this morning with the student leadership team and, at the high school, and one of the big things we took out of it was just communication. A lot of the students didn't realize that there was a TIPS hotline that they could get on anonymously. A lot of the students didn't realize that there was a tips hotline that they could get on anonymously and report things. And they weren't aware that the teachers were trained for shooters and tornadoes. You know, one, one girl said, yeah, I walk into a room and I kinda look around at, you know, where would I go if, you know, there was a tornado or where would I go if there was an active shooter? And we assured them that, you know, the main thing would be to just trust your teachers, that they know what they're doing, they've been trained in this. And, you know, Dr. Peck and Gill even gave some examples and they were like, wow, we, we had no idea. So, you know, we came away with it as that we needed to communicate to the students. And one girl came to me afterwards and said, this would be great if you could have all the freshmen come in here and tell them what you told us. Not necessarily do a Q and A with them, but just inform them, all the sophomores at some time, all the juniors, just so everyone knew some of the things that they expressed that they didn't know.
And they appreciated us coming in and they wanna do it more. So I think we're gonna try to figure out a way to.
It was like nobody, I mean, you, the whole group, nobody knew that we hired two mental health professionals. I mean, they were just like, are you serious? And so, you know, we kinda told them the process, you know, go to the counselor, they will get you, you know, set up with this person here. But, you know, I know that goes out in emails from the principal or whoever, but, yeah, nobody, nobody knew that that was something that has been done.
Yeah, I think that's a new challenge, getting that information to our student level. And we don't often think of that as much, as much information as we get out to the parent level. I know Stephen Miller does a lot of dual, he goes, goes to parents and the students, but I think students make it a habit of not reading those. So we'll have to find another, another way.
They've tried to emphasize this year with the freshmen, get in the habit of checking your student email.
Check your student email, even the ones from your principal.
Well, you know, as a board member, we, we talk about safety and security so much. So we kinda get immune to some of it. To me, as a mom, it was eye-opening to hear them sit there and verbalize how much they do truly think about an active intruder.
You could visually see, you could visually see their anxiety level drop.
Yep.
When we said, you know.
Your teachers are trained.
You guys are here to learn. We don't want you go, they're like, how come we don't go through active shooter training? You know, and, and Dr. Peck and Gill explained it to them. The teachers and the staff and the admin go through all that. You're here to learn. We don't want you going through that. We don't want to cause anxiety, you know, with the students. And them knowing that the teachers have gone through that, that we have mental health professionals and there's, all this stuff is happening that they don't see, you could, you could just see the anxiety level drop on all the kids.
And they kinda wanted more information so that they could share it with others. And Mr. Miller did a good job of saying, you know, that's not your job and we don't wanna put that on you to worry about that.
Yeah, then they said, can, can we go to the students? We, and he said, he did, he said, we don't want you in the line of fire. That's for the administration, you know, in the school district to relate that out to everybody, not you kids.
And I think we probably could communicate better that the students obviously know what a fire drill and a tornado drill and some of those other, even, even intruder drills we have at a certain level, but it's not the same training that the staff get for very intentional reasons. And so we're not.
Just, I'm sorry, to me.
No, go ahead.
You know, they, they talk about going on, these kids aren't gonna go to the website and find anything. If there's a way we could come up with an app or something for like the quick tips that they could put on their phone?
Yeah, we've, we've already looked into that.
Okay.
You can download, we can maybe push out a shortcut to the Quick Tip app directly to their Chromebooks.
To their Chromebooks, that's.
Well, and I think having those short snippets for them when we email is gonna be the way to get them to try to read it, because if it's the update, they're not gonna read it.
So one thing we will do is, Mr. Miller's gonna take our RP update that was focused on safety from a month or so ago and resend that to the students as kind of a request coming from the SLT. So we'll, we'll look at doing that. And today's meeting was a outlet, it was a subcommittee of our August 24th meeting. And we had over a dozen of us meet on August 24th. One board member was left off the calendar invite, but he will be there next time. But Ruth and Billy were both there and I, I think we had a very productive meeting that day too. I don't know if you wanted to say one or two things about that meeting and we'll move on.
Who's at these meetings? What do you mean?
We had, well, we had two of our three board members. We have Pam, Director of Technology, Director of Facilities, Director of Curriculum, excuse me, Communications, Apple Bus, General Manager, an SRO, a High School Administrator and an Elementary Administrator. We had presentations involving Parents on Patrol, which would be a, another layer off of our watchdogs program. We talked about Badge Pass and had a presentation from a vendor on what that would look like in terms of scanning and driver's license, especially in our elementaries, to do a sexual predator background check immediately on every visitor. We jumped into all the different components of safety beyond, a lot of us, and rightfully so maybe, focused, jumped straight to active shooter when we think safety, when it's so broad. It's such a huge umbrella. And that was our second meeting.
One thing I learned was that's new this year is the bus company has an app now that they can actually track when and where the bus stops, what time it was, how long they sat there.
How fast they're driving.
Yeah.
Every time the door opens, I mean, they, they.
So when a parent says they didn't come by our stop, he can go back and look and say, yes, the bus driver did stop.
Or they can, you know what, we'll pull up the bus right now, we'll look at the route and we can tell you how fast they're going.
Yeah, and it's, it's great because our drivers know that I have that capability.
So, and the other one was the, the new access badge, sticker access, I guess.
Yeah, that was the Badge Pass piece with the checking in.
I really like that.
You know, Kim did finish up, we, we went through a whole Crisis Go orientation. It's an app that we use quite a bit as a district. You know, it was pretty extensive. We put a lot of information into, into an hour.
So the committee, one of the things they're doing is exploring some of those visitor access programs that are out there, because there's several companies that do that.
Like Children's Mercy has, the new scan.
Instead of just getting a badge that says visitor, I mean, if they can go home and make a badge that says visitor, I mean, you're gonna give them your ID, you're gonna get your ID back, they're gonna put a tag on you that has a picture of your ID and everything on it. And, I mean, you, you're gonna look like you belong, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's dated with purpose and destination.
Right, and where you're supposed to be.
It also has the backend sides for us for like, we can run reports immediately to see who exactly is in our building. If we ever had an evacuation, for whatever reason, we can say, here's the people that are in the building right now.
And it keeps the history too, so if we needed to know, you know, who was in a building at what time.
Is that like the Crisis Go or a separate app?
That would be separate from Crisis Go. This would be a standalone software program. You know, it would, it may say, you know, Kim York requires administration conversation before she enters the building, something like that.
Again, it's just. Again, it's just building in an additional layer on to our safety.
Now, if you have a, a parent come in, say if I come in and I wanna go have lunch with my kids, you know, you sign in, you get a badge and you go. Well, if there's some court proceeding that prohibits me from seeing my kids and that's on file, when you give the ID, that's gonna be in a database and it's gonna kick it out, so you're not relying on a receptionist or somebody that's sitting there saying, um, you know, you're, you're not supposed to be, it's just gonna give a red flag and you can't enter. So, I mean, I, I really like the, the idea.
I think, I don't know if I talked with you or who it was, about making sure that our front staff people have the training to deal with disruptive people in the front office. Because sometimes that's some of our biggest safety issues, is their frontline that they have to deal with every day.
All right. Obviously a very active group, lots to look at. Strategic Plan Committee meets, I believe, Monday afternoon. So we'll kinda be debriefing a little bit on what we talked about earlier this evening and then talking about a variety of other things that relate to that. Our ongoing monitoring, things of that sort, that we're going to do throughout the course of the year. Team Ray Peck also meets next week. You wanna give them a quick preview? That's our staff welfare and benefits and calendar and all, all of the things related to staff. So look forward to that group. And then Wellness I know has some activities coming up.
Yes, we have the Fitbit Challenge that's going on right now. And there's 245 Fitbits that we have available, handed out here at the end of the month for registering to participate in the Great River Run Challenge. And then we also talked about different prizes for some of the different challenges coming up in October and November. October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, November will be Maintain, Don't Gain Challenge. And then this Saturday, we have an all-staff workout at 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM at the football field. And, and all administration is expected to be there unless, unless you have a note from your mother or a note from your kid's coach saying you have an event. So hopefully everybody will be there and we'll have two different levels. One will be more of a circuit training and one will just be walking around the track. And we hope to just kinda jumpstart people to get a team, get a group together. It's always more fun to work out with a group. And maybe, you know, they can connect with a few people who they didn't know worked out and form a group and continue to work out. Our next meeting's the 27th.
So obviously a lot of activity going on there and some committees will be kicking off their work here in the next few weeks. So again, this is an area where I would commend the board that there are a lot of school districts where board members don't serve on committees and there's no active participation at the committee level to. I think it's helpful because you get a chance to interact with staff and other patrons that are part of some of these committees and get a little deeper dive, if you will. And I know you end up relying on each other for a certain level of expertise in those areas. And hopefully we've landed in, landed you in a spot of your interest and be thinking about the curriculum review committee in terms of whether or not you think you might be a fit for that.
Well, as a board member, I can't imagine not doing these committees because you do get such valuable input and perception and just, you see how things are working. You know, we went through, walked through of Crete Moore the other day and we got to see that how our policies do work. You know, there was a, a young man that was having a really rough day, but the rest of the school kept going. You know, you, you got to see things in action. So I think from a board's perspective, you know, seeing those things, seeing the new carpet laid at Timber Creek looks great. And it's amazing though to look at the old versus the new and see how phenomenal our staff has been to keep up what we did have and made it last as long as it did. So it's good to see the things we do in action.
Dr. Monsis, what were the two topics on curriculum review with Dr. Volker? So we can be thinking about that.
Physical education and library media are two curriculum areas.
That kind of is a good transition into the board, board engagement discussion. This is kind of a carryover from in June. We spent some time talking about opportunities for board engagement at the June retreat. And out of that discussion, Pam created that, what we're gonna call a district events calendar. And so she has shared that with you and I don't know, I know syncing that with your calendars may be a challenge. So if you have not been able to sync that particular calendar with your other calendars, let us know.
Talk to Mr. Walt.
So did we get an email or what, like how did we know about that? I don't, I, that's the first time.
It, it was just a shared calendar. It would've been an email that said this calendar has been shared with you.
It's a Google calendar.
It's another.
But I mean, when I pick up my phone, what do I click? I'll get with you.
Yeah, we're gonna need.
Yeah.
Nothing popped up that said click on this and you have a new calendar.
Okay, so we need to make sure we've got that link to you, so.
I had to have help.
Yeah, we'll get you the technical support to make sure you can see that. And with that, what we're trying to do is put on some events and activities that we think might be of interest to you. And again, that's a different layer than your regular calendar that we need the RSVPs for this workshop or this conference or the board meetings and things of that sort. So it's just an FYI type of calendar of different activities and events that you might be interested in. We're not putting sporting events on there, that's a whole nother calendar and there's too many of those, it would just pollute the whole thing. So one of the things Dr. Volker and I have done is tried to actual schedule some site visits and Ruth mentioned that, she, she, she was able to access the calendar and.
I found the calendar.
And, and came this week and we went to visit a building, bless you. So we've tried to schedule collectively times where we're gonna intentionally be in a couple of buildings, either in a morning or afternoon session. And to the extent any of those meet your schedule, that's an opportunity to come see what's going on in the schools. And it, it forces us to do the same on a structured basis, so it's been helpful, helpful for us as well. And, and it's always exciting. I, we, last week we went to Peculiar Elementary and I walked in a kindergarten classroom and young lady wanted me, wanted to read a book to me, so I said, absolutely. I sat down in the chair and I said, this'd be great. Well, she hands me the book and I open it up and it's, it's above her reading level, obviously as a third week kindergarten student. So what she wanted me to do was read the book to her. And she immediately turned around, started backing in to sit down on my lap so we could start reading the book. And literally a minute later, I had three more students lined up with their books ready to.
In a circle around him.
Yeah.
So I took a picture. So I will have to get, Michelle, we'll have to get it publicized somehow. It is a great picture, because you see the kindergartners just start to swarm.
Yeah, he had one at Crete Moore that just couldn't fathom how he didn't remember their name.
From, from the, from the first day of school, only did their pictures.
And he reminded them there were over 6,000 students.
Oh.
And walked off.
So anyhow, that's just one example, but we're trying to put some of the other events on there. I know.
And so are those the, the building meetings? Like when is the next one?
The building site visit, the next one is next Wednesday morning.
I will pull it up.
Wednesday, the 19th?
Yes, at 8:00 AM and it's the high school and show.
So I, I definitely need technical help, so I don't have that on my calendar at all.
We'll get it, yep, we'll get it.
And I didn't even know about the last one.
Okay, we'll make sure you get.
Something's happening.
Yep, we'll make sure you get that information. And again, we don't necess, we're putting things on there that we don't necessarily need RSVPs. I know Paul's interested in another opportunity, if you wanna share your thoughts on that with the board and.
Well, we talked before about going into the different schools and meeting with the leadership groups. And, you know, Dr. Monsis shared some of his concerns. And I was thinking that just do one building per year and let them know, you know, when it would be or, you know, have them tell us when would be good for them, just to come in and sit down. And that way, it wouldn't be like, you know, we were imposing on their meetings or, you know, just giving them the opportunity to prepare for what they wanted to visit with us with and wanted us to know from them as teachers. So, you know, and would, would everybody have an opportunity at some point, maybe to do that with your schedules? I mean, I don't wanna, you know, because some board members are more flexible than others, you know, I wanna make sure if you knew in advance, maybe you could take a morning to go.
And this is meeting with who again? Like you said teachers, but then you said administration.
Well, there's a leadership group in each building.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's a billing leadership team at each school. And just for context there, at the elementary level, they typically meet in the mornings before school. Most often at the secondary level, they're typically meeting after school, be the time of day. And I think what you were saying is, maybe if, if there was one meeting per each building during the course of the year that could schedule, we could set those up and maybe have 15 minutes on their agendas. When, when you originally suggested I was, it was more of a random, here's where all the meetings are, go to the ones you want to, but you're, you're describing something that's a little more structured, which I'd be more comfortable with if you wanted to do that, so. You just have to tell us if that's what you wanna do.
You know, Billy and I did talk to some groups last year and I think Ruth was with us once too. And I, I found it very enlightening. You know, I felt like the teachers opened up and talked about some things that they were concerned about.
I was getting a pedicure one day and a lady walked up and she had worked at Crete Moore. She said, by the way, I just wanted to tell you thank you for coming in. We appreciated you just listening to us.
And so the ones so far, the things that have come up, what has been done about, like the things that you heard, the issues they raised, like what was the after impact? What, what happened afterwards and how did we or someone worked to resolve those things?
Well, I, I think because there were, I mean, there was only two. And one, it was just when we were meeting at Timber Creek, I got there early and I was looking around for people and it's like, well, they're all in there. And they didn't know I was there for teacher appreciation, they thought I was there for the meeting. So I walked in and it just kinda happened by mistake. But then they said, well, you know, we're glad you're here. And then we did arrange one out at Bridle Ridge. And, you know, most of the feedback was, you know, again, we talked about teacher salaries and what they expressed is, we would like more help, more than more money. You know, another person or a person that would be just in charge of discipline in the building. But I think, again, what Billy was saying, just, and Ruth, just the fact that we were there listening to them. I mean, you know, we, I, I did communicate that, you know, I realized there's a chain of command. You know, the teacher goes to the principal, the principal goes administration, administration comes. But I think they were happy to just talk to us and be heard.
Yeah, just to have somebody listen. And, you know, another thing was a professional development time, which that's being addressed and, and, and looked at. But just to have somebody listen to, to their concerns and, and how they feel and how things are moving along, I think is huge. Again, lower the anxiety of, are, are things getting done?
What you said on the one I went to, I don't think there was necessarily a thing that was discussed that needed the follow-through and the follow, the follow-up with it. It was more of just letting them talk.
Yep.
I like the idea of getting feedback. I like hearing that, like, it would be structured. I think if we're going to do that, I think we're going to hear people being excited that we were there listening. But after we do it for a year or two, if we haven't circled back and closed the feedback loop, I think it could turn negative on us. And so I think from the very beginning, we need to be a hundred percent intentional in closing the feedback loop. So after the meeting, some kind of communication goes back saying, we heard this, this, and this. And then we're going to have to follow up on it. And we're going to have to ask administration to do, which is probably what we need to be doing. But I think we have to commit to the communication afterwards if we're going to commit to doing it. And so we all have to be willing. And that means administration circling back. Otherwise, two years from now, it's going to be, oh, yeah, we're really excited you all came and listened, but we keep talking to you about this and nothing has happened. Or we don't know what's happened. Maybe stuff has happened and we didn't tell them. So as long as we communicate back, I think it could be a very valuable thing.
Does it need to be a group where it's the same group of people going each time?
Well, I think what would might make sense to me and it becomes down to the scheduling issue that the, I don't know that having all six or seven board members go to the same meeting is going to be as productive as having two or three. So my thought would be, we try to structure something. Try to structure something that would include two or three people per meeting so we don't get to a quorum. That might be smart. And then do it at a time where they're willing to put fifteen minutes in their agenda for you to be there or something like that. Because they have a pretty narrow window and they always have a lot they're trying to address and accomplish. So if it's just going to be a once a year and they can pick the month and we can get some lead time on that, we could probably build a calendar that we could divide it up among the group. And part of the setup might be, as you talk to them, is that we're collecting this throughout the course of the year. We'll take that feedback to our retreat in June and talk about it. Unless it's something that needs immediate attention, that's part of the setup is the, we, we will, we'll take all of these together and look at them collectively as we do planning for a new year or something like that. I'm just trying to lay out a scenario where it's manageable and we keep expectations to what, what, what we think would be supportive.
Do we need to put this to a vote, whether we do it or not, or?
I, consensus is fine. I'm hearing pretty good consensus here to structure something that makes sense and then work at it for there. And if that's, unless somebody hears, they're saying something different, let me know. But I, we can work on building a, at least a schedule and trying it.
I think another thing that could help keep it positive and in the right direction is when, if everyone likes this idea, is when communicating to them that this is happening, you know, we're seeking feedback about concerns and solutions. You know, so it's not just-
Thoughts and ideas.
Give us, give us some solutions or your ideas and thoughts about what the concern is as well as just the concern.
I think we hear a lot of things that we really are working on.
Right.
You know, it needs to be-
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Well, the nice, the billing leadership teams typically are folks that are really passionate about improving their schools and the school districts. So by nature, they tend to be folks that are going to be really forward-thinking, we hope. So.
And, you know, that's, the best ideas come from the people that are involved with it every day.
All right, we'll work on building a schedule and revisiting with our administrators to try to figure out the best way to put together an implementation plan. And then in the meantime, we'll get the logistics of getting that calendar synced for everybody so that you have the other opportunities that are out there. A lot of those are going to be much more organic. We're going to put PD day information on there for you in case you want to come see what the PD events and activities are. Some of the major, you know, performances we'll put on there in case you're not otherwise engaged with kids at that level. We'll do some of that. And then, again, our building visits that we're doing, Dr. Volker and I, that you can join at any time. So we'll continue to do that. But again, I appreciate the board's willingness and interest in doing that, knowing that you all have very busy lives and any time that you put into above and beyond what these meetings are is appreciated by everybody in the school district. So.
Okay, moving on to board member replacement. Kim Bailey submitted her resignation to the board effective in August as she was appointed by the governor to the state board. I mean, obviously, we'll never be able to replace Kim. But somebody will have to fill the position. So the board policy states that the vice president will move into the position. Not permanently, but I guess, do we vote on that or?
So let's talk about process overall. So there's two steps of this. One is filling the position. And then at some point, the board's going to have to decide. Right now, Paul is acting president. At some point, the board can reorganize and fill, refill the officer roles as well. So let's tackle those as two different items, if you will. The replacement process, the policy, our new policy of the MCE was very similar to the old policy with MSBA. So the first step in that is to notify our community that there's a vacancy. So we can do that through our normal communication channels. It speaks to taking applications. And many districts have done it as asking folks for a letter of interest. And that serves as the application process. We don't necessarily have to create an application per se, unless you want to. And so we, my suggestion would be, we open it up for a period of a couple of weeks to see who might express interest in being considered. And then the policy speaks to having either the board as a whole or a subcommittee of the board review those applications and identify no more than three folks that we would bring to interview for the replacement of the position. That interview would be in a public meeting, much like this, probably in an informal setting, like a work session or however the board can choose. So there would be a period of gaining interest from candidates out there. We would either, one of the things process wise, we would need to decide is if the whole board wants to review the entire pool or if you want to identify a subcommittee. We don't have it scheduled to be an action item tonight, but we can do anything next week at our regular meeting in terms of action items that we would need to do. So maybe have a conversation first about whether or not everybody needs to be involved at that level or if you want to create a subcommittee. That might help us then decide what we want to do next.
One suggestion too was to send out memos to previous board members and just have the position filled till next April.
Yeah, that's another clarifying mark. This, this position, this seat is on an April two thousand nineteen cycle. So this is a short-term appointment coming into the election process for that seat. People are going to have to be able to file for that seat in December, January, like you would any other time of the year. So it's a, it's a, it's kind of a short-term fill, if you will.
And also communicating with those who ran previously, who, you know, finished right behind Ashley and Billy, that hey, there is an, an opportunity here. And just make sure that they know that.
I think for something like this, I, I, I think the whole board would want to see all the applications.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
That's, that makes it fairly straightforward. So then the question is, how, how soon do we want to do that? There's a couple of options. We could put notice out that we're seeking interested candidates and give them, I would say, two weeks or so in order to express their interest. And then we could either set up a special meeting to just review that or have a longer meeting, say, our October date for our work session or something to that effect, which remind me what the date.
October eleventh.
So we could, we could do a special meeting the week prior to that on October fir, fourth. Or we could roll it into fourth, roll it into our work session that we already have scheduled on the eleventh.
Yeah, because we would have to review them first and then-
Yeah, we would send them to you.
Narrow down to the three. Right? And then interview those three.
Yeah, we would send them to you ahead of time to review. But you'd want to have discussion and do that narrowing together, is what I think.
So we would have one meeting to, we would get them, review them on our own time. Have a meeting to review them and discuss them and vote to narrow it down to the three.
Correct.
And then a second meeting where we actually conducted the interviews. It would be much like our superintendent selection process.
Right. So it's a two-step, two extra meetings. And again, it could be that we coordinate one or both of those with another meeting that we already have planned.
Would it work in the timeframe to wait and see how many applications we had before we decided on whether combining it with a meeting or not? I mean, if we have thirty applications, we're going to want a separate meeting. If we have three applications, we could probably do it differently.
Um, I think we could make it work either way. So.
The other question is, are we going to do just a letter? I guess, just have them submit a letter that they want to.
What would be the application?
Yes.
Letter of interest.
I would say a letter would probably be the easiest.
Do you want something specific that we ask them to include in the letter? You could say a letter of interest.
I don't even remember what's on the application to be on.
What's that?
I said, I don't remember what's on the original.
And when you sign up, you, there is none. There really isn't. So this would be just a letter saying that there's an open seat on the board. Board's looking for those interested in the community to serve in that seat until April two thousand nineteen. We would include their requirements, what's required to be a board member, include that in it. And then we could have maybe an open-ended, please submit any additional information that that you think makes you a good applicant, applicant for filling a board seat and let them address what they want.
From our perspective, it might be good to know, A, are you just wanting to fill this temporarily? Or B, are you wanting to fill it and run again? Might be something for us to know if we open it up to just everyone.
Can we ask that?
I don't know if we would be able to ask that definitively or maybe ask through the interview process with the finalists. Might be the time to get into that level of detail.
Do we want somebody like Joe O'Neill from the NEA committee?
This is a board function.
Just a board, okay.
This is a board function.
I think a letter would be fine.
Okay.
Kind of what you said, please indicate. Please, your qual, your, your reason for interest and qualifications, something like that.
Leave a kind of an open-ended, tell us why you want to do this or why you-
Anything else you want to?
Right, okay.
And then plus, if you're interested in doing this long-term.
I, I think we want to hold off on that. I don't, I don't know if we want to, that might be crossing a line that we don't want to cross. So I'd be hesitant there.
Well, they may not know until they-
Right, right. They may need to see it first.
They may get into this and go, you know what, six months is enough.
I'm done.
Yeah. I think, let's do a, let's do a tentative then. It sounds to me like if we're going to use the entire board, we probably ought to go ahead and try to schedule a meeting if we can, just to have it on the books. And we can do that between now and next Thursday's meeting. Having, I've already got an agenda item for, plan for this process. And we can use that agenda item to set any meetings we have. We'll probably go ahead and look at the calendar and try to get some dates lined up. We already have a lot planned for our regular work sessions anyway. So we might need to have two special meetings then, just to do this process.
So can we go ahead and open it up before we meet next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get that information out.
Get the letter out.
Right away.
And that will go out? How will that go out?
I would say all of our regular electronic channels that we would do.
And will we contact the papers?
We can do that as well.
And just word of mouth to, if you know good candidates.
I mean, not like an ad, but, you know, their online presence.
So probably I at least ought to agree on a closing date in principle here. So if we can do that early next week, get that together and get it out. And I don't, I don't know that more than a couple of weeks is required for that, but.
Just for transparency, I wouldn't make it too short. I mean-
Yeah.
If we put it out tomorrow, two weeks would be the twenty eighth.
Tomorrow's going to be tough.
When were you going to try to schedule our meeting?
He said it's about the fourth and the eleventh.
Yeah, the eleventh, we already have a work session. So if we wanted to have a review on, we could do it on the fourth. Or if we want, if we can go to a different night, maybe the ninth even. That'd be two meetings one week, but.
I'd rather see us go to the ninth and give them until the fourth or fifth. And then we get them to review over the weekend and then we have a meeting on the ninth.
Narrow it down to three.
And on the ninth, we narrow it down to the three.
Is that something that we could vote on, on the, at the board meeting? On the board, or?
On the ninth, we'll set it up as a special meeting on the ninth so you can vote on who the three are going to be that night. We can do it that night.
Are we wanting to interview prior to the eight, October eighteenth?
We don't have to. We, we, we can fill this at any meeting of the board, regular or special. So it doesn't have to be that fast if we don't want it to be. The realistic, we, Pam and I had talked about trying to have them in place or maybe even seating them at our regular November work session date. Might be the, a good time because that packet is all public information. There's no closed session confidential information for that meeting. We can install that person if we have them identified on November eighth. We can make that be the first action of that meeting and have it.
So we can do interviews the week of October twenty third or something?
That week is difficult because Pam and I are both out that week. So.
October twenty ninth, that week?
Yes, that would make the most sense.
So if we're going to do interviews the week of the twenty ninth, then really, there's no rush to get that first meeting in, right? So. So the ninth would work, I guess.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Would October thirtieth then work potentially for the interviews? I realize that.
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
Parent teacher conferences. I just don't want you to schedule one of those and then-
October thirtieth is?
Right, but there are three days of, of parent teacher conferences.
Shortened version. And then there's quite a bit on the Thursday, the first.
Thirtieth?
So what is the ninth? Is that to narrow down to our three?
October ninth is the screening. And then October thirtieth would be the interviews.
Sounds good.
And then we could, once you make your selection, then they can, the next work session in November would be their first meeting, if all goes well. And again, there is no time requirement here. So as a board, we can be as flexible as you want to be in terms of-
And that would be at six? On the ninth?
If that, if that suits everybody, we'd probably do it at six o'clock.
And we would just like to extend our thanks to Kim and all the work she did and appreciate her moving up to the next step. Sorry, forgot my microphone. I said, you know, we all do appreciate the work that Kim did while she was here. While we are sad to fill her spot, we do appreciate her being willing to step up to the next level and do what she needs to do there.
I'll add a comment today that I was in Jeff City for the Commissioners Advisory Committee since part of that committee this year. And that was this morning. And then this afternoon at one o'clock was the confirmation hearings for Kim and all the other statewide appointees that the governor has appointed. And so she was number thirteen on the list. And they didn't go by the list. They actually bumped one of the other state board members up in front of her, which took a while because Mr. Hirschen is well-known by the legislators and they had some sparring to do. But anyhow, she, she had about a five-minute interview in the process and she performed admirably, represented everybody very well. And I'm not sure if they voted at the end of the day or not, but. Okay, so I, I'm assuming they finished the process and moved her forward. So she'll do a great job and everybody had great things to say about her. And Senator Emery was the one who presented her as the senator for our region. That's the protocol that the senators do the presentation. So congratulations to her. And again, we're going to miss her, but she's assured us that she's going to continue to serve in a variety of volunteer, volunteer roles.
We have a good neighbors meeting tomorrow, so hopefully she'll be there.
She can't go far.
Yes, I still need her.
All right, so at our action, for our meeting next week, we will actually set these special meeting dates then officially. And we will get notice out. Probably, it'll probably be early next week that we send the notice out, but we we'll get it out as soon as we can.
What did we decide on the notice time? Did we decide?
The fifth, I believe, is what we were shooting for.
They'd be do that Friday or Thursday or something so we could have them over the weekend to look at, before the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we have them do the fourth, that would give us the fifth to compile them and send them out to you.
Thank you somehow. I missed that.
Yep, let's do that. All right. It's kind of an exciting process. First time I've ever done this. So it's new to me.
Any other comments?
Thank you to our staff for putting these work sessions together. I know it's a lot of extra work for you guys to stay late another day during your week. So thank you.
It's all good stuff.
So we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
We won't even have to vote on it.
Good job. Good job.